All right, we will call the council meeting to order. Everybody stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, take the roll, please.
Mayor O'Connor.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Alms.
Here.
Knutson.
Here.
Kennedy.
Brooke.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
All right, before we get into the agenda, I just wanted to recognize our fire chief here tonight. And this is his last council meeting with us. Scott St. Martin is retiring. And I just want to personally thank you for the service to our community. And I know I speak on everyone's behalf in congratulating you on a tremendous job. You shepherded us through a number of different things. Most noteworthy since I've been here is the new fire station. And what a gorgeous building we've got, great facility, and I want to thank you for that as well. But thank you for keeping our community safe. Thank you for all you've done. You've been a big part of our community, a big part of this administration. And we're going to miss you, Scott.
Thank you. Honorable mayor, common council members, I'm going to have to take off after this because we have a monthly meeting going on right now. But I'd just like to thank everybody for the opportunity to work with everybody. And we've been through some interesting things. As I look around the table, see the new faces, all the ones that are around. Randy, you were the only one that's been here the whole tenure. No, it's good. You keep it challenging, but you are always respectful of public safety and all that. And it's been really fun to work. Bill, we've worked with you a lot on the public safety section of it, and it's been great. It's developed a nice friendship. The new council members, I'm sure you're going to do a great job. Joyce, we had some always interesting times with ups and downs with EMS, everything else, but you've always been there any time I needed you. One thing that I am really kind of bummed about, and I think we all are, is that one of the people who was kind of initiatives of getting this stuff going was the late John Hoggitt, and he wasn't able to see this. So thanks to John and Sarah for her time she put in too. So other than that, I just really, you know, kind of want to just say thanks for everybody for just supporting me. But really, I kind of want you to remember is it's not necessarily the department heads or people sitting in this room. It's the people in the street. It's the firefighters, the police officers, Public Works, our Parks Department, who are out every day. They're the ones that really get the job done, so please don't forget them. Keep the city moving forward, but bring them with you to make sure they're at the forefront of it. So thank you very much.
All right, it's time for citizen comments. This is your opportunity to talk about any issue that affects the city that is not currently on the agenda. This is limited to residents of the city only. Please keep your comments brief and try not to repeat what other people have said. Do we have anybody on Zoom?
Nope.
Just one second. So I lost my train of thought. Oh, if there is an agenda item that somebody wanted to speak on, like I said, you're not, according to the rules right now, able to speak on that. But there could be a request coming from one of the council members to remove it from the agenda and have a public hearing, at which point we could have a full-blown discussion about that topic. All right, anybody have a comment? Yes, come on up, identify yourself, please.
Hi, my name is Jeannie Castro, and I reside at 1806 Willow Drive in Hudson. And I am a resident, or good evening, council persons and mayor. I am a resident of the neighborhood that is adjacent to the government center. And I realize that with the expansion that's been approved, there's a couple of different phases that I would like us to really look carefully at before approving, which is like Phase Two, which includes putting a parking lot up and an impound lot right on the area that has a lot of wildlife. And it is, if you're looking at where it is, it's directly across from Grandview Park, the parking lot. So there is a mowed path that pedestrians, bikers, students from the schools, and the Y have been using for recreational purposes, as well as deer, wildlife, endangered species, wildflowers, and just it's well-preserved land that has not been touched. So I would like us to really look carefully before we approve a project that involves a parking lot which would cause runoff into the marshland area. And also, I just want to preserve the land for our upcoming generations, because I mean there's not that much of this wildlife left in the area. So my proposal is to really keep to the footprint as much as we can in the existing campus of the government center. I know that they are going to be discussing this tomorrow in a meeting at 1:30 at the government center, a planning meeting. So I encourage anybody from the community who is close to the area or just has a, wants to learn more about the project to attend. And as our city progresses, I would like us to really be concerned about our green space and preserve it as well as we can, because once it's gone, it's gone. So that is all that I have to say.
Thanks, Jeannie.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Any other comments? Any other comments? Hearing done, we'll close that portion of the agenda. And we have a presentation from the chamber on the 2021 Room Tax Use.
Bear with me a minute just to get this hooked up. Hopefully this works. These plugs aren't working, so do you have another hookup? I have brought my own cord, Mr. Reeves.
I'm trying to see if Brian's around.
Jeff, you got anything back there?
I thought you said we just needed to bring the computer.
That's all you need, should be able to plug it right in.
So yes, normally.
Is there anyone that can help?
We're looking. Well, here comes our AV guy.
I'll do it before Brian's here.
So you're on an iPad?
There you go.
Was he in the building?
Yeah, he's right here. Okay. He's cutting his home.
I need to plug in this one. That cord will not plug into this machine.
That's not going to plug into the technology.
It does total great.
HDMI. I mean, we have HDMI, but.
Well, I'll talk about.
So I'm sorry, did I just understand something? Mr. Reeves, want to ask a question about?
What's the issue, Brian?
His device doesn't have an HDMI port.
Oh, so it doesn't have a standard port that you'd use for presentations?
Correct.
Sorry, it's always worked for everybody else.
Should we reschedule? So I think that the presentation is important.
I have no problem coming back.
I apologize if I misunderstood something in your question, but the presentation is important, so is there another option?
So do we not have an HDMI cord that'll plug into your computer? What's the other end?
This has, and the cord that I brought is the one that I put into my projector. I will be happy to bring my projector with my screen, which I have used for several years.
He's got a flash out, so I'll grab my laptop real quick.
If you want to take something instead, and we'll, until he shows up, we don't want to hold you up.
I'm just curious about, I think I.
I didn't hear you.
What type of format do you have on your computer? Is it Apple or?
No, this is Microsoft. It's a Microsoft Surface is the unit.
Okay.
I think I got an HDMI cord. Car. It's not, the thing doesn't have HDMI.
Surface doesn't have an HDMI plug-in.
It's more like a tablet?
Oh, okay.
So it doesn't have the usual connection that everybody else has.
Do you want to take the consent agenda?
Yeah, all right, we'll postpone this for a few minutes. Consent agenda.
Approve the meeting minutes from June 6, 2022, regular council meeting. Approve claims in the amount of $1,082,422.23. Approve the 2021 wastewater CMAR compliance maintenance annual report. Approve Bridge the Valley Bike Rally Event. Approve FIP Center for the Arts Concert. Approve the Spirit on the St. Croix. Approve pedestrian crossings at the intersection of First and Walnut Street. Approve the final development plan review for building expansion at 3325 Hazer Street, U-Line. Approve taxi license and taxicab drivers on the list sheet. Approve plans for specifications for the 2022 sidewalk and curb project and adopt Resolution 6-22.
Would you pull that, please?
Approve final payment for the 2020 sidewalk replacement project. Approve conditional use permit, five-year review for milestone materials to approve a non-metallic mine at 2700 Hanley Road. Approve the plans and specifications for the 2022 alley repaving project. Approve the reallocation of $13,750 from the Hanley and Center traffic signal upgrades to repave a portion of O'Neil Road. Approve the memorial application submitted by Nikki Brooks. Approve the installation of a life jacket loner station at Lakefront Park Boat Launch. Approve the installation of a free little library in Prospect Park. Approve the Hillcrest Drive median restoration. Approve plans and specifications for Third Street Laurel Avenue project and approval of Resolution 7-22.
Pull that, please.
And discussion on possible action to appoint Beth Weiskopf as second alternate to the zoning board of appeals.
Move to approve. Second.
We got a motion, second to approve consent agenda with the exception of items J and S. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay, roll call.
Morissette.
Yes.
Alms.
Yes.
Knutson.
Yes.
Brooke.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Motion's approved, consent agenda is approved. All right, item J.
Okay, since that's got a resolution, we need to suspend the rules, so I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Got a motion, second? Good catch. Is there, roll call, suspend the rules.
Morissette.
Yes.
Alms.
Yes.
Knutson.
Yes.
Brooke.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Motion's approved, rules are suspended.
Move to approve Resolution 6-22.
I'll second that.
Motion, second to approve, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Item S?
Same thing, move to suspend the rules.
I'll second that.
Motion, second to suspend the rules. Roll call.
Morissette.
Yes.
Alms.
Yes.
Knutson.
Yes.
Brooke.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Motion's approved, rules are suspended.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, second to approve, discussion.
Is this, it's changeable as we move it forward? Something comes up, money drops out of the sky?
For the Third Street?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so change order is allowable?
Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved.
Before we finish, I'd just like to mention that item C was the compliance maintenance annual report for wastewater. And I just want to compliment the wastewater treatment plant workers. They have had a tough year with all of the construction going on, and they still had an outstanding CMAR report. So congratulations to them and thank you to them for their service.
Excellent, thank you. All right, are you guys ready? Perfect.
Thank you. Thanks for the gentleman to fix this.
What are you talking about?
So my name is Mark Gerty. This is Tricia Christensen. I am the chairman of the Hudson Area Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau Tourism Committee. And thank you for the opportunity to make this presentation. Tricia and I will be tag teaming here. She will be the second. After I tag off, she'll take over. My family involvement with the Hudson Area Chamber of Commerce, and at that time it was a Hudson Chamber of Commerce, spans my entire life. My father was practicing law starting in 1957. I was born in '52, and I think he joined the Chamber of Commerce in '53. So I practiced until 19, excuse me, 2018. And my first involvement with the Chamber of Commerce was in 1982. And at that time, the Chamber of Commerce was in a somewhat of a low point with some very energetic workers, two women, Wendy Brooke and Patty Iton at that time. And the Chamber of Commerce office was located at one desk in the basement of First National Bank. And it was because of Ken Heiser making arrangements for that to happen that that's where they worked out of. At that time, the fundraising and the budget were supported by a bowling tournament and bake sales in the lobby of the First National Bank on Saturdays. And in the mid-1980s, in approximately 1985, if my memory is correct, Randy's mother was a member of the Board of Directors at that time. And we, that was about the time I came on in the Board of Directors, when we started to talk about the Chamber of Commerce being a business and operating it as a business, not as a club or some sort of, just a committee to be run. So as a result, there was an expansion of the Board of Directors and also a direction of where it was going to go. And it was at that time, discussion was being held by a lot of people about tourism as an industry, tourism as a business that would benefit this community. And that carried on for the latter part of the 1980s. And when Duane Baki, former CFO and CEO of Norlake, the late Duane Baki, came up with the idea as a result of his son being involved in hockey, that the hockey people are tourists. Every time they fill their tank, that's tourist money. They go to the store, that's tourist money. And it was as a result of that that we started working towards doing something that would allow us to be essentially having the tourist money fund the Chamber of Commerce. And it was because of what the actions of the legislature in 1993, when they revised the 1967 Act, that being in Chapter 66, the room tax dollars. And we were, Duane and I were in this room facing this direction, because that's where the desk was, and made the presentation at that time about room tax and how important it was, and that that 3% of the room tax being charged for every room that was in motels and hotels at that time. We didn't have Airbnbs. But it was a situation that that allowed the city council to appoint a commission under that statute, the commission to essentially be the fiduciary for those funds. And that's what the city does each year with the allocation that is made, and we thank you for that. And it's used specifically, and it has been, for the purpose of the, that the tourism as we carry through, it's for tourism promotion and development. And that's what these funds are used for, and we'll go through here in just a second. So if we can go to the mission statement. And the mission statement is very important. If you look at that from the standpoint to provide value to and serve our members and provide or promote a strong local economy and advocate for the interests of the businesses, business community, champion sustainability, and market the recreational and cultural opportunities in the Hudson area. So it's a situation of involving not only the lodging properties in the hospitality industry, but also with all the other industries that we have and working hand in glove. Expletive. So the objectives and the, to look at, that is to increase the economic benefits of tourism into the community by marketing Hudson as a community to explore, visit, and support to both local and tourist audiences. And you will see the breakdown as to what has gone on each, over the years with that. So we look at the, from the standpoint of the objectives. Tricia, if I could change places where my eyes are such that I need to look at that. So, thank you. So I will, you have those in front of you in much bigger screens than we have here. So, but specifically, when we look at developing the relationships and consist of communications with the lodging properties. We have a monthly tourism committee meeting. And the tourism committee, and Randy has attended that as part of the government side of it, but also we have two members from the lodging industry that sit on the committee also. And we also look at developing new materials and to promote the community and develop a partnership to add program, value-add programs for the hospitality partners with Welcome to Hudson packages. And so the committee members are myself, his chair, Isaac and Devin Brazil. They are new members that just got on within the past 120 days. And what did they do two weeks ago? Present, bring the circus to town and present it down in Lakefront Park. And it's that type of energy now with new people that are involved that promoting Hudson not only from within but without also. The Dan Jarvis from the Afton House Inn and River, the River Cruise. Darby Lunsford from the FIP Center for the Arts. Buck Malik, Sustained Hudson and Riverfest. Rosemary Mansfield, this is very important, she is with the St. Croix Valley Regional Tourism Alliance. And so that's a matter of working, and it's the other thing that the chamber is doing, is working with the other chambers up and down the river. And that brings up a fact that Rosemary was very involved in a conference that I spoke at involving bicycles and a trail, and that was in September of 2019. Little did we know, six months later, that the floor is going to fall out and we're going to have to learn a new dance. And so at that time, it was because of the tourism action that we made a presentation, actually about a 30-minute presentation with at that time, the Director of Tourism for the State of Wisconsin, excuse me, Acting Director. And she was very interested and actually came back then for, because of our presentation to Hot Air Fair, along with some of her staff members. But it was that involvement with Rosemary and the booklet that she produces, which is excellent program from the standpoint of the promoting the valley, of which we have a substantial add in that. I handed those out at the six visits I made on the legislative day on the 12th of February of 2020 to the various, it was the Vice Chairman of the Finance Committee, Joint Finance, and she said, "I love Hudson." This is Roberta Darling from the West Bend area, and from the standpoint that she said, "I love that new bridge. I love to stand on that bridge and look towards Stillwater, which is fine." And then she talked about coming to Hudson. And the other thing she was so excited about is the University of Wisconsin River Falls, who was there also promoting at that time. Randy is on, when he can come, when time is such. Abby Nirvan is there. Julie Peterson, this is very important, because Julie is in the Office of the Community Development for the County. Deb Pittman from the Hampton Inn, and Justin Turbus from Hop and Barrel, and Ron Thies from the Holiday Express, the new one. Lodging partners, and I won't go through all of those, they're evident there for you to lay out. And, but what I do know, and this is off-script, but from the standpoint, the lodging partners, you don't see any Airbnbs on there. Room tax, read the room tax statute. The room tax statute should apply to Airbnbs. They are lodging properties. And as a result, 3% of that should be coming here. And so, end of sermon. So partnering promotions, Hot Air Fair. That started out as, in about 1994, '93, with Cabin Fever Days. And that went for two days, or two years. And that's where Hot Air Fair came out of, two years later. The chamber decided they weren't going to fund it, it wasn't making a lot of money. And then it was a situation of Hot Air Fair came to town with 50 balloons, et cetera, and they're doing okay. And it's a great event. So those are the events that we've been involved in. And these numbers here, the partner event and the attendance, we're not standing at all events with the clickers. These come from the organizations. So the FIP Center for the Arts, the number of attendees, 7,400 people over the year. That's, when it says seven performances, that's their season for those performances, not, they don't have $7,000 or 7,000 people showing up for one event. So then the others laid out, the Octagon House is very important, the number of people that show up there throughout the year. And the Sailing School, it's been phenomenal as far as the number of people from the ages there, from five to 60s. So that's important, so, okay. And Booster Days, we don't have the statistics available for that, but it's interesting how somebody can look at the Lakefront Bowl area and estimate the number of people that are there. And so those are estimates, so we didn't put any of that in. The Trolley Company is important, North Hudson Pepperfest. Riverfest is expanding and growing. What showed up last year with the Yellowstone Trail Days is very important with the military, the antique cars, et cetera. It's, and they drive away and they talk about what a great time they had in Hudson and what a great reception they had. So, and that's what we're all about. So the other thing, finally, we're dealing with, the attendance with Spirit of St. Croix, which again was adapted. That started out as a religious event, and then has morphed into the big art festival. And with the FIPs stepping in, because the afternoon art fair goes on at the same time, that it's a matter of, there's almost 75, well, 7,500 people there plus tour homes, and then going back to, again, into the 90s. So, and Buena Vista stroll through the park with the lights, and thank you for your appropriation for that. It's very, very important. And so I will turn it over to Tricia. Thank you.
He's giving me the hard slides. All right. Regional partners, some of these should be very familiar from past years. We continued some partnership with Art Reach. Minnesota Monthly, part of our contract with them includes the Greenspring Google Ad campaign, working with the Pioneer Press again, partnering with Star Observer, St. Croix Valley Regional Tourism, Travel Wisconsin. All of these should be familiar with what we've done in the past. And then also in this deck is the breakdown of expenses, which is less before COVID, but we are starting to ramp back up now that things are a bit more consistent. Hopefully, knock on wood, that we're starting to see some consistent positive impact in Hudson. So we'll show some tourism digital data that applies to the website, which again, last year, we had two different websites. So I think it was right before Memorial Day, we merged the chamber site and the tourism site to make the experience a little bit more consistent for our visitors, but also our locals, so our locals can explore Hudson as well. So some of the data in the last year, going from June 1, 2021, to the end of May of 2022, we had about 87,000 visitors on the Hudson website. And the second to largest visited page, the first being the homepage, the second most visited page is Discover Hudson. And then when people come to Discover Hudson, they really dive into fairly evenly across the board, whether it's events or looking at Hudson activities. the board, whether it's events or looking at Hudson activities. Booster Days were huge last year because people were just so excited to come back out. And we had fireworks, so we had a lot of traffic for people checking out the Booster Day page on the website. Local attractions, those are the second highest under Discover Hudson. And then it's really equal, people looking where they can eat and drink. Some of the event pages you'll see score really high. But unique tours and out in nature and concert in the park, there's just a really nice spread of why people are interested in Hudson. The tourism social stats have gone up. Our Facebook page reach has gone up. You'll see that we had more than a quarter million reached on Facebook. Instagram is a much smaller account, and we've been trying to promote the growth of that as well. So both saw some significant growth over the last year. And even though we spent less on social ads, we had a bigger growth period. So it's great. You know, we want to make sure that we're doing more with less dollars whenever possible. And some other things that we've tried in the last year are Google Display Ads. So we did that last winter, rolling out a fall, trying to promote Have a Hudson Holiday. And we did it again this spring as well. So the spring campaign resulted in almost 5,000 clicks to the website and had a lot of impressions. And this was through Minnesota and Wisconsin and Iowa, anything that's really considered a drivable distance to Hudson. And focusing primarily on females that are 35 to 44, because those are our top reporting age groups. So the response from Greenspring was that the Google Ad Campaign for Hudson performed 50 to 60% higher above industry average, which is a great thing to note. We also tried some articles, native articles on Travel Wisconsin and Minnesota Monthly. And if you didn't see last fall, we had a great partnership with Travel Wisconsin, and they came out and did a big photo shoot. The nice thing was, not only did we have a writer come out and really highlight reasons to visit Hudson in the fall, and they had that article on their website, they actually gave us rights for all those photos. So it's something that we're adding to the library, and we've used several times over. So it just had a value, exponential value. And then you can see next to that, that Spring into Hudson, some of these fall images looked like spring in Hudson. So we used them for a second article, which was great. And so this Spring into Hudson was a Minnesota Monthly native ad, so that was on their website, and they promoted it on social media and through their email channels as well. And then we had a lot of tourism materials that we worked on updating. For the overall campaign, we've already mentioned social ads and Google Ads. Of course, we had print ads, the partner emails, articles. And then we also built out landing pages. So every time we had a topic or a potential post that would be very specific, we would try to build out a specific page on the tourism side of things, just to make it really clear. I mean, even the dogs in Hudson were kind of a nice hit. So you can see on the right, everything has a very familiar look and feel. Everything is very consistent. And we do look at the publications in the Twin Cities to see potentially what other people are seeing and making sure Hudson feels different and looks different and has a very approachable personality. Last year, we introduced the pad map to help direct visitors. So if somebody was staying at a hotel and they were asking, where's a good place to eat, you know, potentially that person at the hotel could circle on the pad map. And this is something that they could tear off and then fold up and give to that visitor. We had a quick reference calendars for events. We have the annual list of events, but then one specific for the Hudson holiday season. We had a seasonal list of guides, and this is both something that is print that exists in the chamber or at some different locations in town, but they're also digital online. So when we list businesses on these guides and someone downloads them, they are clickable to go directly to the business websites. We had a lot of fun freebies that would help incite stories, like send us stories. So if somebody said a nice thing about Hudson, we could give them a poster, and we had a lot of stickers downtown. And then, of course, the Hudson Community Guide, this is an annual thing that is in partnership with the Star Observer. So this is last year's, and the 2022 is out. And then the welcome sign in Lakefront Park is very consistent to everything as well. So we have kind of that overview map of the area and try to promote the greater Hudson area and exploring all of it and directing people to the chamber if they need more information. And of course, we're already in 2022, but we're launching a few things. We have the updated pad map, which is now in color because there's so many things in Hudson. We decided that color coding would really help when directing people in the downtown area or up on the hill, whether it's places to stay or restaurants, parks, those types of things. We're going through a mobile web audit because one of the things we're noting from social media and web is that we're seeing more and more people using their cell phones. And now it's actually crossed over the 50% threshold. So if people are thinking about coming to Hudson, they're using their mobile device. So we're going to audit the entire site and make sure that it's mobile friendly. And then we're going to take some of the content that was created for Travel Wisconsin and Minnesota Monthly, add it onto the Discover Hudson site, and then add additional content and potentially launch a tourism e-newsletter and direct posts so that we have our own native articles. And then I think finally, that's launching, you know, next month is the tourism brochure. So I'm not showing you the inside because it's a surprise. But that uses some of the Travel Wisconsin photography and really highlights the different themes of the Hudson area with the dining and the art and culture and the parks and all of it. And it just really represents our community well. And so that is it. There's any questions?
I have a question, Tricia, on slide 15, I think it was. I was wondering what accounts for the spike in impressions? Is that something?
Oh, sure. Yeah, it's usually when we're boosting. So if there's an event or if there's something we're trying to promote in Hudson, we put some more dollars to it. So you'll always see a spike in social or the website when we have a promotion. And I believe off the top of my head, probably the biggest response this last year was the Hot Air Fair because we were promoting that fairly heavily, just because it's past our holiday season. It's a really good opportunity to bring people in, but just even think about Hudson in the winter as a destination.
Tricia, what's?
What's that?
What's an impression?
It's just when people see it, like it's in their feed versus when someone actually clicks it. So it just, as many times as an ad shows up on your screen, it can read that as an impression. I don't like reading impressions so much. I like when I can read the clicks. You know, that makes more, that's more important.
In there, you had something about bounce rate. What does that mean?
So the bounce rate is when people are leaving fairly quickly. And for the chamber site, it's a little bit tricky because the event pages are so short. I mean, we do promote to specific event pages, so we have a lot of people going, again, for Booster Days, and if they just want to know the dates and the times, they can look at that page and leave, you know. On average, most websites that we have, people stay about a minute to a minute and a half. Rarely do they stay over two minutes unless there's video content. So the chamber site and the Discover site is right in that realm. But there's just so many simple downloads and easily clickable things that even on like the dining pages or the retail pages, all of those are hyperlinked to the businesses. So if they see a restaurant that looks interesting to them, they could bounce out of the chamber site and go directly to that business. And that was one of the things we changed too. So they don't have to go to the directory page, per se. We're trying to make it easier for visitors to access places to stay and things to do.
Thank you for the pad maps. They are an invaluable tool for the properties. I'll tell you, it saves a lot of time for helping the tourists find all the attractions in Hudson.
Yeah, they'll look better this year.
As I.
Get rid of them.
As I heard you talk about some of the benefits to this community, specifically promotion and development, I echo a huge thank you for all the work you do, especially as we're coming out of COVID and know what an important role you've played in helping bring new people to our community and create awareness. It is definitely felt by business owners and the business community and nonprofits in the area, so thank you.
Are there links to all of the resources that you showed on the website? So if we wanted to pull up, for example, the pad map, would we be able to do that?
The pad map is really an in-person tool. It doesn't work digitally, but the new one should be out, I forget what month we're in, it's June, so it should be out in July. And we could bring one, just so you can see it.
But what about the other resources?
The guides are all online. Those are really things that are specific to each type of page. And, you know, I joke about the dog one, but that had a lot of pull last year especially, that travelers sometimes have a barrier because they don't want to kennel their dogs. And when we have so many great patios here that say, Bring Your Dog, and even some hotels that say, Bring Your Dog, we created a guide for it. And Angel's Pet World has a stack of those guides in her retail shop telling all of her visitors, you can come stay in Hudson for the weekend. We are very dog friendly.
And the dog park?
Yes, that's on there.
Respectfully, I didn't see the nuts and bolts of the organization and where we're at with membership year to date. And we're trending, because I know it had been going down a bit because nonprofits, right, didn't have a lot of extra cash. So the first thing we all cut out was memberships, memberships and dues.
Well, and this was a tourism recap, so not a chamber recap. Yeah. Yeah.
Still curious.
So, yep, great question, Randy. I'm excited to announce that we are growing. So we added 12 new members in May. We're up at 437 members, which is much higher than it was when I came back in 2018.
Very nice.
Anything else?
So there is, Mark, you, when you kicked this off, you talked about how, I guess maybe the watershed event was a discussion about the hockey rink.
Right.
Of course, we were going through these pictures pretty quick. Was a hockey rink there? I mean, were you promoting hockey? I didn't see anything about discussion about hockey, the booster ball fields.
At that time, the hockey arena was located where the post office is now. And it was.
Talking about currently?
Yes, but I mean, what we did at that time. So the discussions, Ken was involved with the fundraiser for that, and Dwayne was also. And that's where we started seeing tournaments being done. And then they sold the first sheet ice to the community. And that was early 90s, and that's when it really took off.
But if the tourism discussion started with a conversation about, look at what hockey is bringing to the community, what about all the other, what about hockey? What about our sports organizations? Again, I mean, we've got Booster Days, I see that represented. But I don't see, you know, any promotion on tournaments at our ball fields, even the high school field, soccer.
Yeah, I would say that when COVID hit, we went through and basically cut any placement that we couldn't measure. If there is an alliance or some sort of association or something where we could have ad placement that was measurable and we would see something impactful, I mean, I would need to know about that. But we wouldn't, I would not recommend putting Facebook ads or Google Display Ads generically about come play sports in Hudson. We would need to have like a, just a target audience specific and understand from the lodging, like what could the tourism committee do versus more of the, is this through schools? Or again, is it through the hockey associations and partnerships like that? You know what I mean? Because it would be a waste of money to do a Facebook ad campaign about the hockey arena.
Well, and maybe, but they're not even represented here. So, you know, as an example, 2011, we were able to bring the Pee Wee International Tournament into Hudson.
Yeah, and I can speak to.
Over 400 people here, three hotels, and brought over a million dollars worth of revenue.
Right.
Hard dollars, not velocity of money.
Well, there is a phase two to the website. There was only so much we could do in 30 days last year. But there are topics like weddings, meetings, sports, all of that. But again, somebody has to write the content and build it and get the photography. But that is a phase two, because it is larger groups. It's very different than drive and bring your family to Hudson.
Mr. Mayor, if I may interject quickly with the Hockey Association and other sports avenues, and respectfully, I say this. There for a time, this association did not advertise any of the hotels. So it was not a hand-to-hand thing. And now it has come back supposedly. So that was kind of a disappointment for most of the lodging. They advertised hotels in Woodbury, Stillwater and Somerset, and left Hudson's off completely as much as two years ago. But I'm not saying that, but maybe to light somebody's foot on fire to say, hey, maybe we should keep it local.
How about soccer?
Same thing.
Really?
But from the standpoint of recognizing and working with the boosters, boosters were seven, eight years ago cited for as the organization volunteers, got one of the annual awards, the same with Pepperfest and dealing with the Hockey Association. So over the years, it's just a matter of, we work very closely with those organizations. So, and I, so I'll leave that there.
So there is, this is just kind of a bookkeeping thing, but we had, how much money, what was your 70%?
About 145.
145? And we're showing 102,000 in expenses?
113.
113? Okay. And I know that this has been a conversation, but I mean, there's money there that I know that you don't have to report anything under $1,000, but you have any idea where those expenses were? I mean, we're the stewards right now of the tax dollars, and I think that's the reason why we do these presentations every year. So we're kind of missing, there's a chunk of money here that's not represented in the report.
The money is in account. This is a situation of anybody.
Oh, nobody's, don't get me wrong. Don't get me wrong.
There's $147,000 that was appropriated, $113,000 that was specifically used. I can, Randy, I believe, was at the meeting in October, November of 2019, about 150 yards to the west of us. At that meeting, when Discover Wisconsin came in and made a presentation, we were all set to take off in the spring, talking about doing something with Discover Wisconsin. That would have been $45,000 for 24 minutes. And that was to be used, et cetera. And we were talking about that. All of that changed. And so from the standpoint over the report that is there, the funds, from the standpoint of the, somebody who dealt with fiduciary issues my entire career, to look at the board of directors that is there, the staff that is there, et cetera, the money that you have appropriated is being handled in a very responsible fashion. Again, a fiduciary relationship, a relationship of trust. And so it's a situation of if those funds for 2,000 were in the fiscal year, that if it's a situation that appropriations are coming up to pay for whatever it might be, and I don't want to get into the accounting of the work that Tricia has dug, but I would say that the chamber's gotten an extremely good deal over the last two years to get back at their feet.
I don't think the question was about the fiduciary responsibility of what you're doing. It's just that, you know, the report says you received 145,882. You accounted for 102,842.44. So the question was just, where's the other, you know, 43,000? But if the answer is it just goes into account to be used for future years, that's fine. That was the only question.
That's the answer. It's in the bank.
Okay, and that's all you needed to say. I guess I missed that in there somewhere that you said that it was.
That was communicated to you before we got here tonight.
No, it was explained to me that you would tell us about that tonight. So that was my question. Where's that money? And if it's in the bank, that's all we needed to know.
We would have talked about that in the three phone calls I've left for you on your cell phone. So go back and check to see if I've called three times.
I think you wanted to use our fire hall for your bridge meeting, and I believe I responded to you about that. So I guess if there's other two calls, when you also said, this is about the fire hall, if this was about this, just clarify, I assumed I already answered that question for you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves.
I will say I'm a little conservative with the planning, just because with COVID, things went up and down. So I did not make a marketing plan that would spend 140. You know, with the Q4 coming in and we have the brochure coming out, I am being a little more responsive than proactive. And it's just, you know, to be careful with the dollars and not overspend because we just don't, hopefully, know, you know, things won't.
It's busy. You should have some more money coming.
Oh, good. That's good to know.
So if there's a fund balance that carries over like that, does it go into like the two? tourism fund when you talk about your fiduciary responsibilities? Is there like a specific tourism fund that it just kind of rolls over into for future year uses for special events or whatever it might be?
We can do more promotion too, which is great.
Or whatever. It doesn't matter. I'm just wondering how it's, how it's structured.
But it's all, you know, we get an audit every year, so it's all in a restricted fund.
Sure.
So tourism dollars can all be used towards tourism and that. So anything that is left, there have been years when the tourism budget has come in short.
Sure.
So, and I think the challenge for us, especially the last two years, has been, you know, we haven't had the consistent years of planning that we had prior to COVID, right? Where we could say, we can estimate we're going to get $185,000 from the lodging properties from room tax, right? So COVID hit, we had a plan. All of us got affected by that. And so I think we had to redirect what we did. And, you know, we've received one payment so far this year. So it's a little hard for us to budget and actually spend when we've received, it's June, the middle of June, and we've had one payment this year so far. So we are being cautious, we're being proactive, but we're also being smart. But rest assured, any dollars that are left that we didn't spend because we were concerned and we didn't have those dollars upfront to spend, if they come in at the end of the year, they go in that restricted fund, which is going to help us pay for the brochure that we're planning to do, to help pay for the pad map, you know. So we, we can't always estimate exactly where we're going to end up.
That makes sense.
I wanted to just make a comment of, I do think even though you may have had a discussion, Mr. Garrity, with Mr. Reeves, it's good to talk about it in public because that way it's an open meeting. And so I hope you don't mind those questions from him because that way the public, if they look at the numbers. And that's good to know that you are being cautious because you did have quite a jolt when everything shut down. So funding, you may have already committed to some things that you had to pull back from. And I know the nature of the Chamber is volunteers and people donating their time and energy and talents and gifts, but I do want to thank and recognize Tricia especially because she is exceptionally talented in donating her work in her field to the Chamber and tourism. And I know that's probably why we get a lot of clicks out of those impressions. So anyway, thank you for your work.
And I publicly thank Tricia and her team too, because we would not be where we are and elevated. And we've rebranded and launched a lot of new things in the last two years in a time when most organizations were not. But we were bold, we were aggressive, and because we had such a great partner, we were able to do that.
Anybody else? Well, thank you guys for your presentation, Tricia, for, I presume you know everybody here. Obviously, your, your organization is an award-winning organization. Everything I've seen you touch is great, and this was also a great presentation. Mark, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
For the organization, Mary Claire, thank you for all you do, for the city, for tourism here. You know, we all love our city, and we like what you guys do.
We heart Hudson.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Should be on new business.
Yep, new business.
Trying to see where new business comes in here.
It's very top that page.
It's right there.
Yep.
Just cut off.
Discussion Possible Action on Ordinance 6-22, mending Chapter 132-Fireworks of the Municipal Code of the City of Hudson.
Move to suspend the rules.
I'll second that.
Got a motion, a second to suspend the rules. Roll call.
Marsette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
Knudsen?
Yes.
Brock?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Motion's approved, rules are suspended.
Move to accept the changes for ordinance 6-22.
I'll second that.
Motion second to approve, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion Possible Action on Updates to Short-Term Home Rental Ordinance.
So this is something where, obviously, we've had this in place now for a little bit. We've gone through some issues with it. You know, we've had to work through some concerns with some of our properties, some of which ended up in court. But we got through the process, and that's good and that's positive. But it was, you know, I think from some comments that we have been receiving from the public through some of our council representatives, or some of our council members, I should say, we thought it was a good idea to relook at it, have Nick take a, take a fresh set of eyes at it, review other cities that similar, have similar ordinances, things like that. So, so that's what's been done. And I think we have Nick's memo attached, kind of with his review and summary of what we should do. And then we have a red line version of what we'd like to see, what staff is recommending to be the updated ordinance, which we think will help to address some of the issues we've seen since the original ordinance was updated, and should also help the enforcement actions be a little clearer and a little cleaner when we have to unfortunately, unfortunately sometimes take that route.
I don't recall, did the tax issue come up in Plan Commission or any of that, that even they suggested?
We, we do collect. I mean, we, it is required collection as part of it. Now, the enforcement side has been a little more difficult. I mean, the ones that we know of that are operating, we ensure that we're getting checks from the, you know, the Airbnbs, the VRBOs, things like that. Compliance isn't always easy because we can't identify them all and stay on top of it. But we do, that is a mandatory requirement to have that room tax, and, you know, we're working through that process of trying to make sure that we get full compliance on it.
And you're collecting not necessarily from the property owners, but the agency that is renting it.
Yep, that's how usually we get those checks. Allison, is that where we get the checks through? Is like Airbnb or VRBO send us something?
They are required by the, the state change this to be, to send it directly to us. They do not identify what property, same as Expedia, same as Travelocity. They send a check, here it is. That's what we get. They don't fill out a form, they don't fill out that. So it's hard to identify to any individual property.
But we are doing everything we can to enforce, and we're trying to make sure we work with the, the various, basically, online agencies that do this to get that enforcement.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you need action on something or no?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry. We would like the ordinance approved. So motion, it would be a motion to approve, whatever that ordinance number is, I can't remember.
We have to suspend the rules, don't we?
Yeah, but when you do it, it'd be 522, ordinance 522.
Second.
Oh, did you make the motion?
Yes, I made the motion.
All right, we've got a motion, a second to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Don't you have to do a roll call?
It's roll. She suspended the rules.
I'm sorry.
Marsette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
Knudsen?
Yes.
Brock?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
All right. Move to adopt the changes to ordinance 5-22.
Second.
Motion second to approve, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub G, to confer with legal counsel and receive advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the city with regard to litigation in which the city is likely to become involved relating to the State of Wisconsin Highway 35 project.
Move to go into closed session.
Second.
Got a motion, a second to go into closed session. Roll call.
Marsette?[1733.01]